And what it is that we're not doing.
I have some of that information that I can send to you. I'll look for your feedback to say this answers part of it, but I need more.
No problem. I'll be happy to provide.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick, for being here. Always nice to see you. I want to go back to Representative Jorgensen's question. I wondered if you, for the work session, could give us some additional information and provide us with more information about the treatment providers who are not using their funds? And also what the conditions of their contract are? Because one of the things that we heard this morning was that some of the contracts dedicate funds to particular kinds of treatment, and so not everybody can access those monies. So if you could help us understand more fully the money that's being left on the table and who can access that money for treatment, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
I will follow up, Representative. But back in, I'm going to say, September, in one of the written responses that you received, you did receive a breakdown of the past several years, what the dollar figures were, and a very detailed description as to why it's happening and, I think, even potential resolutions in that. So I can find out if they sent it along as well.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
It's covered, isn't it? There were five options, and I got the first one on my first book. Thanks, Nick, again, for the testimony and the suggestions. So AKHS committee, I believe, is going to be working this work session tomorrow and Thursday. I appreciate the fact that you'll be available and other folks from the department. I think this issue about the connection between what we're hearing from a lot of people in the community about, in particular, relatively our central workforce of people talking about the inability, in an immediate sense, to get people into treatment. And what I'm hearing from the department about what they're going to do about capacity, I think that's a really important topic and how we can talk about that in the AKHS meeting. And obviously, in anything works this. And you and I had a back-and-forth in email, similar to the question that Representative Martin just asked you about the breakdown in that 70 million, 76 million, whatever the number is.
Seventy-six is 14. Seventy-one, I believe, is 15.
I don't know if 15 is on that presentation you're writing.
Right, so I'm looking at a presentation I did.
The Department put together the commissioner reviews. And I guess a couple of questions I would really need to track down. One is, it looks like that from 2012 to 2014, that amount of general fund spending that we put towards substance abuse has gone down. Part of it's all for reading the grant, but it looks like it must be several million dollars. I'd like to know why that's the case. I had a question about the number of, it looks like the number of people being served has gone down by about 2,300 people between 2012 and 2014. I know some of that is the, I imagine, the custom make here, eligibility, but for other reasons. I don't really like that. I'd like to try to understand that. The other thing that you pointed out in your testimony, which is also in this presentation, is, again, it looks like the cost per person for treatment has gone up dramatically over time. And again, any insights that the department might have as to why that is the case? You know, certainly would be helpful to me. But a lot of these numbers in this presentation are around, it looks like, the total spending for substance abuse. And I took some of the information you gave me about what the SAMs spending was, and I looked at some of the budget documents and tried to crosswalk them together. And obviously, it would be a pretty difficult exercise. So again, another level of granularity about how the money is spent and provided. I assume the main care spending is all from the claim's history. But have you guys, this bill is very focused on the opiate and heroin problem. Do we have subsets of numbers that really focus on that problem as opposed to a larger issue of substance abuse? I assume some of these, that these numbers of the total substance abuse spending, probably including alcohol addiction also?
Yes, I believe that is the case. With main care, it's, as you know, it's, you can get to a certain level of granularity, but it is going to depend on what that physician put on the claim, how it is coded. So it would give you some picture, potentially. The data from the Office of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services, they have some on the uninsured. It's not, it's not going to be a gold picture, what's going to provide you a snapshot, but may not be a gold picture that we're looking for. But I can certainly ask and see if we can drill down more to get that sort of granularity.
I guess on the main care spending side, it would be good that you at least know what question was that was asked. You know, I mean, what question do you think the data led to that? You know, what were the parameters around what you were asking? But I think one of the things that would be helpful to me would be to understand how we can focus these numbers more on a specific problem as well as we can with respect to this legislation, which is opiate and heroin problems. Yeah, I mean, again, I think that's the other question.
Senator Kegs, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Nick. A couple of questions for you. First, do you know of the 70 million we're spending on treatment and prevention for substance abuse, how much of that is alcohol? Can you give that to us?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's certainly something I can track yet.
And you hear you talk about those waiting times for intensive outpatient or inpatient. Do you know what the waiting times are for entry into detox facility? If you don't know that, good luck.
So I don't. We, right now, contract with only one detox, so, I believe, social detox. The data that we have from them is that there were zero, something along those zero days waiting placement, but the way they were collecting the data was not a way that truly indicated how long somebody was waiting to get that. So the data didn't help us get that, how long you have to wait to get into this detox bed. So again, like with a couple of representative teams I can ask, I'm not sure you can come in and get anything better than that.
You heard this morning, Samantha Gordon, that there are long rate times. If you can't get it, we can suggest ways we might be. Another good, that would be helpful. Thanks very much, Nick.
Thank you. Nick, in your, from the last paragraph on page two, you make a statement about substance abuse treatment providers must do everything possible to ensure that Mainers enter treatment, complete that treatment, and successfully recover. That statement reminds me of the fact that I have never felt that the commissioner or many of those who speak for her or along with her in the department understand substance abuse to be a chronic illness, or addiction to be a chronic illness. If we were talking about diabetes, or high blood pressure, or high cholesterol, we don't really see an end to treatment. And so I'm trying to understand why it is so important for the department to say that we need to help providers get people through the end of treatment and successfully recover. And then you go on to say that without that commitment, no amount of taxpayer dollars will solve the substance abuse problem in our state. I don't think that anybody thinks that this is going, this bill is going to solve it. You know, it's just one piece of the puzzle, and it's an ongoing process. It's a chronic illness. People always need to continue to allow people into treatment and to try to improve their recovery. And we know that there is successful treatment and recovery, even if it's long-term. So again, I'm trying to understand why you think it is so important that we complete treatment and prove a successful recovery, or we're not going to invest? We wouldn't deny treatment to a diabetic if they don't control their blood sugar. Why with substance abuse do you treat that?
Well, first of all, with diabetes or the other chronic illnesses that you're talking about, there are measurable standards, there are expectations that a physician knows and has related to those specific chronic illnesses. And I don't think, no matter what the chronic illnesses that we're talking about, it's not unreasonable to expect a standard of success.
Well, again, with chronic illness like diabetes, the success rate is much less than what we're seeing with treating substance abuse or addiction. So again, I still don't understand why that makes a difference. I mean, a physician is not going to stop treating somebody with diabetes, even though probably 39% or something like that, people are compliant and control their blood sugar. You know, so why the discrepancy?
All I can tell you, Representative, is we believe that standards and expectations are important, no matter what the treatment is that we are participating in. We believe it's important, and not just for us and for our pocketbooks, for the state budget, but for the people that are receiving that treatment.
Representative Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Allison, for being here. I have two questions. First is pretty quick. On your bullet points, numbers one through five, or is it six? On the end of your testimony, these are six. These are areas that you've said the department is focused on, policymaking changes and initiating action. Are you, are we to expect, are we to expect separate pieces of legislation along these lines? Or budgetary items to cover these, or change orders, financial orders or anything? Or are you just going to do that internally?
The things that I have listed there in one through six are things that we can do through our own policymaking rules, and things that fit within the budgetary constraints that you, as the Appropriations Committee, passed in the Miami budget. There are a couple of things that I noted that would definitely require the legislature to act. I don't have a bill waiting in the queue to come forward, but if you want the use of the PMP to be mandatory, that requires your action. If you wanted to put some opiate prescribing guidelines in law, that would have to be the legislature to do that. We have authority over certain aspects of the main care population, the population that we care for and fund through that budget, but we don't have authority over the broader physician practice.
Right, but the administration can bring forward legislation at any time. So I was asking, are there plans?
At this time, no.
Okay, my second question is, on the first page, you reference the number of babies who are born with addiction. And I recently had sat and talked with a family who are foster parents for a baby that they went to the hospital and picked up who was born addicted. And they, for 30 days, walked the floor in four-hour shifts with this baby as he cried the drugs out of his system. And they wanted to alert me to, their sense was that the department is severely under-resourced to deal with these little casualties of our war on drugs. And I would just ask you, do you feel that the department has sufficient resources through the foster care programs, through any of your child protection resources? This seems to be a very quickly growing issue. And I just was wondering if you felt that you have the resources to deal with these babies?
Right now, Representative, yes. If we come to a place where the resources are short and we cannot, we cannot help these babies, then we will ask.
Any further? Representative Martin?
Thank you. And Nick, a couple of questions. A couple of questions in reference to page three, the phone. When do you plan to launch that effort?
I don't have a date set in stone yet, but we're looking at July 1st, that range.
Second question, has the department paid for our state, for individuals to go out state for services? For treatment or?
I don't have a definitive answer off the top of my head for that.
And?
For certain kinds of treatment, I'm not sure.
Right, substance abuse or drug abuse? And if so, where and how much?
Senator?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Any further? Thank you.
Remind everybody, as we move forward here, we've got three sheets with 16 names each on them. We've got 48 in line. We'll be running the shot clock and ask everybody to be mindful of all the others who are waiting to speak. We've got a long day ahead of us, long afternoon, so we'll get rolling here, but be mindful, yes.
And we will be reading on the names that are coming up on the list too, so that if you don't want to be in this committee room, if you want to be in the transportation room, where you can talk, you can move around, you can curse us if you want, if you sit there and listen. You know, feel free to go to transportation. You won't be overlooked when it's your turn, and we'll give you plenty of notifications so that you can get up here and discuss.
So it looks like I've got Noble, Harmon, Santorelli, Vratahn, and Markey as the first five. So Carolyn Noble?
Mr. Chair, senators and representatives, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Carolyn Noble, and I live in North Waterboro. I'm a member of the Behavioral Health Community Collaborative, and would like to share with you a brief story. In 2001, after a number of years on the job, I broke my back working as a firefighter. Immediately out of a job and unable to work, I find myself sliding deeper and deeper into a serious depression. I resorted to self-medicating with alcohol and drugs. Back then, there were services to help people like me. I was able to get main care and assistance for my addictions. With main care, there was the help of community integration. That community integration worker was able to assist me in setting goals and encouraging me to work toward them. With her help, the help of main care and substance abuse disorder services, I was able to get back on my feet and go back to school. I turned my associate's degree into a bachelor's degree. Now I'm working toward a master's in human services with concentration in leadership. I am also an adult community integration worker. That was then, when there were services to help people. Now there are many people who have been cut from the roles of main care, so without that assistance, they are not getting medical care, mental health care, and are self-medicating as I did. The recovery centers are closing due to lack of funds. People with addictions can't afford the cost of these facilities without assistance of main care, so they continue to use, and the addiction problem in our state has become epidemic. As a community integration worker, two-thirds of my caseload consists of people who are homeless. One half are people without main care, and a large number of my caseload is using or abusing alcohol and/or drugs. I see this firsthand on a daily basis. As a member of the Behavioral Health Community Collaborative, I believe the state must take action to address the drug epidemic in Maine. Everyone who is a drug addict and/or alcoholic also has an underlying mental health issue, usually unaddressed. Anyone who has successfully treated for drug addiction and alcohol must also be treated for their co-occurring mental health issues, yet there is not funding included for those services. The best treatment is prevention. Community integration programs in the caterer health field and services provided by the Healthy Maine Partnerships are successful ways to find and treat people who are at risk of drug addiction and/or alcoholism. Both programs have been drastically cut in the past few years and are at risk for further cuts. Successful treatment is a process, often a long one, not an event. There must be transition services and access to ongoing support services for people in jail who are released and have no services, prompting them to return to drugs out of financial necessity and addiction. As you can see, the cuts to social services in main care drastically negatively affect on the people of this state. As a direct result, the people most in need of services are not able to receive them. We need monies for community integration and for those people who need assistance getting back on their feet. Community integration helps those people leaving the penal system, drug and alcohol addiction services, and rehab centers. Most of all, we need to expand main care to those who are uninsured. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Carolyn. Questions, committees? Thank you, Nick. Jane Harmon?
Hello, I'm Jane Harmon from South Portland. And I also am a member of the Behavioral Health Collaborative, as well as a volunteer with the Opportunity Alliance. And I have notes in my hand, but I think I just have me a fan. If I had more than three minutes, then I would be able to answer a lot of questions from real life that Mr. Allison was not able to answer. So if you ever want to call me, get in touch with me, I have some very direct experience. But I'm going to kind of wrap this up in a short story, because what we do at the Opportunity Alliance before every board member is there's a mission moment. And that mission moment just reminds us of why we're there and the work that we do and the families that we help and the lives that we save. So my story is a little girl who was 12 and sexually abused. And that led her to a path of textbook, maybe, or textbook, she wrote the book. Depression, anxiety, PTSD, eventually addiction, having a child born to addiction. Luckily, he was not affected. How did he get so lucky? But so she had struggled with this for a long time. And everybody tells her, has told her along the way, that you need to get help. That's what you do, get help. You go up, start a detox. That makes you available, physically, emotionally, and mentally available to receive help and ongoing help forever. And so she woke up one day and was in a really bad spot, felt that she had finally hit what everybody describes a rock bottom. And she decided she'd call her mother and say, will you take me to detox? I'm ready for this. So of course, the mother does, jumping for joy, this is fine in the moment, the moment of hope, takes her to nursing recovery and doesn't expect to hear from her for three or four days, because that's about how long people are in detox to get that medical help that they need. You can't detox on your own. And so on the fourth day, the mother, expecting a phone call, probably by the third, fourth day, did get a phone call, but it was from a friend of this, of her daughter's, who said they had found her face down, unconscious. And luckily, she was revived. I don't know what she saw as luckily, because what had happened was she never went through detox. She didn't get there. She got inside with all the hope. Here's the help I need. I'm doing what everybody has wanted me to do, what I want to do at this time. And they turned her away because, two reasons. Number one, she wasn't sick enough. Number two, meaning she didn't have a high enough level of drugs in her system. Number two, the most important one, she didn't have insurance. And so they showed her her way out. They opened the door and saw her walk down the street. And if you could imagine how humiliating that must have been. It was like being rejected from the loser's club. She's walking home, she doesn't tell anybody, nobody knows, until that phone call comes back to the mother that she's, she never got the treatment. And so when she went home, what she did was what she knows. She curled into a ball, she took drugs, and this time she shot bleach in her veins, hoping that that would end the pain. So I know this because it's my daughter. And it's unconscionable for me to imagine that we will leave money on the table and not provide necessary treatment. It is not out there. I have volumes of note, I have tirelessly spent months and years on finding her the treatment that everybody says she needs. It's not there. Zero to 14 days, whatever that number was, I'll take the high number. It's not, zero to three days, it's not. And you have to use to get in. You have to use and have a high rating to get in. This is, this is the truth. This is what's going on. So my grandson, who survived, you know, when he was born, survived the side effects of her abuse. You know, who's going to, if she doesn't get treatment, she'll die. That's the bottom line. She'll die. She'll be one of the statistics, and she's tried. So who's going to stand up to this eight-year-old boy and tell him that he doesn't have the money? Because we didn't have the money? Really? I guess we could just tell him, hang in there, kid. National Guard's run for it. They're on their way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Questions? Thank you for sharing that. Vanessa?
It's difficult for me to follow the previous two speakers. I appreciate their testimony. Senators Hamper and Raiki, Representatives Rotundo and Katine, distinguished members of the Appropriations and Financial Affairs Committee and Human Services Committee. My name is Vanessa Santorelli, and I have the pleasure of serving as the CEO of the Main Care Association. Our association represents all 20 of Maine's federally qualified health centers, which serve approximately one in every seven Maine people for their primary and preventive healthcare services. I'm here to offer testimony in support of L 1537 as a first step in what we understand and hope will be a multifaceted, long-range, and comprehensive approach to addressing the alcohol and substance abuse crisis facing our state. We commend the presiding officers for coming together as concerned Mainers to support a balanced and targeted approach that will lead to increased awareness and prevention, as well as greater access to treatment, recovery, and support services for individuals and families struggling with the disease of addiction. This legislation provides modest yet critical funding for law enforcement, a bangor detoxification center, peer support and recovery services, prevention and education programs, and residential and outpatient treatment for the uninsured. These are all worthy investments that we support. In addition to these measures, Maine has an opportunity to significantly enhance the impact in addressing this issue by accepting the federal funds to expand access to care for the uninsured. Maines FQHCs understand and appreciate how acute and complex the challenges are in caring for individuals who suffer from substance abuse and/or alcohol use disorders. Many of our patients are among them. However, not all of our health centers have the trained clinical staff capacity or in a financially sustainable enough position to offer the full range of counseling, treatment, and support services they need to get well and remain healthy. This set of circumstances comes at a time when state, federal officials want the health centers to do more to serve this population. A few months ago, the Bureau of Primary Healthcare, a federal agency that provides funding for and oversight to the FQHCs, released a substance abuse expansion grant opportunity. Despite how pervasive the DCs of alcohol and substance abuse disorders is throughout our state, only four of our health centers submitted an application for these critical resources. There are a number of reasons why the majority of our health centers did not compete for these funds. Chief among them is the fact that taking on a broad range of new and complex services at a time when RFQHCs are operating on such narrow margins is not financially feasible. In 2015, nine of our health centers reported having less than 30 days' cash on hand. The combination of factors contributes to this, including but not limited to the barriers that exist for recruiting and retaining primary care providers, the requirement that FQHCs serve anyone in their service areas regardless of insurance status or ability to pay, coupled with the cuts to main care eligibility for tens of thousands of individuals, and not accepting the federal funds to expand access to health coverage through main care. The resources provided in this bill, along with the federal Medicaid funds available through the ACA, would offer more uninsured Mainers access to substance abuse treatment, recovery, and support services, as well as broader primary medical, behavioral health, and dental services. I ask you to consider the following percentages of uninsured adult They ask you to consider the following percentages of uninsured adult patients as a percentage of their total patient populations, for those who call your local health centers their medical home. At Foxport, twenty-four point nine percent of the patient populations uninsured are nineteen hundred and thirty-eight patients. At Nassau, on survey in York County, thirty-eight percent uninsured are eleven hundred patients. Katahdin Valley Health Center, twenty-six point six percent uninsured, two thousand six hundred and twenty-six patients. Portland Community Health Center, forty-nine point five percent uninsured, or nineteen hundred and fifty-three patients. Sokely Valley Health Center, quarter of twenty-one point three percent uninsured, nine hundred ninety patients. Rangeley Family Medicine, part of Health Reach Community Health Center, twelve percent uninsured, or a hundred Maine patients. Bethel Family Health Center, part of Health Reach, eleven percent uninsured, four hundred thirteen patients. Sheep Scott Valley Health Center, part of Health Reach, in Cooper's Mills, eleven percent uninsured, four hundred and ten patients. Community Clinical Services in Lewiston Harbor, fifteen twenty-eight percent uninsured, two thousand, two hundred and seven patients. Fish River Rural Health in Fort Kennedy, who ate fourteen percent uninsured, five hundred and sixty-two patients. PCHC in Bangor, twelve point seven percent uninsured, seven thousand, eight hundred and forty patients. Regional Medical Center, Alabama, fifty point five percent uninsured, or four hundred and eighty-five patients. These are just some of our health centers, those are just some of the numbers of uninsured, and one reflects on the number of coworkers, friends, neighbors, family members, that these percentages represent. There can be no question about the need to enact this bill and other related bills that seek to eliminate disparities and barriers for mainers seeking low-cost access to healthcare. I'm sorry, I know I went way over my time, what entertaining questions. I tried to read fast in order to beat the clock, but I...
You're speed reading. Questions, anybody?
Thank you very much.
Kate Broden?
Hi. Hi, my name is Kim Broden, and I'm an addict in recovery. Thank you for your time. She's right. This woman I was speaking with was right. I spent six months in jail waiting for a bed, or even thinking that I was going to go in with you. So, I'm going to start off like this, I'm not nervous, I'm sorry. It says, recovery is a return to health after sickness, the return of strength after weakness, the return of hope after a time of despair, the return of love after an absence of feeling, the return to the path of a superior person after having strayed from the path, all lost by gain and sorrow by joy, that is the way. My name is Kim Broden, and I'm a recovering addict. So, I was born in Providence, Rhode Island, two months premature, weighing three pounds, six ounces. I was what we were talking about earlier, I was born addicted. So, I grew up looking for an escape from reality, because my reality for me was being sexually abused by a man that after two years took his own life in my living room, and I sat with him for eight hours. I felt the loss of a child when I was nineteen, my daughter, Naveah Dawn, was stunned by me. She was two and passed away in my arms. I fell victim to depression and just not caring. I had given up on myself after running for sixteen years on the streets and in jails and institutions. Wellsprings gave me a chance. When I was emotionally broken and spiritually bankrupt, May sixth, two thousand and eleven, I came to Wellsprings, which was the hottest six months of my life, because I mean, I had to look at myself. I had to realize that drugs and alcohol were not my problem. I had to learn that I was my problem, the way that I was thinking. Working that program and doing what was suggested to me gave me a new sense of hope and a chance for a life second to none. Today, I'm an active member of society who pays his bills, taxes, and most importantly, has custody of his daughter. So, my question is this, since addiction hits so close to home, and there's nobody probably here that can tell me that it doesn't, who gets to pick and choose who life is more important than another? I would never, I would never imagine being willing or able to say to another human being that their life is not worth living, and they don't deserve the opportunity to be shown that there is another way. While Wellsprings doesn't actually give a new life, it does give addicts the tools they need to build a new one for themselves. Without Wellsprings, more addicts never knowing another way, and we continue a life of substance abuse and all it entails. The focus of addiction should remain treatment, rehabilitation, and relapse prevention. Wellsprings provides this and much more. Today, I am an active participant in my life and society today. Instead, the state would be paying to house me in one of their correctional facilities. Mind you, if they wouldn't have done Wellsprings, I was doing eight to ten, and I'd still be in prison, and you'd be damned for that. If, if it were not for my experience at Wellsprings, I would not be returning to Wellsprings to bring other men into the workforce and gain experience with becoming a productive member of society. I own my own business, and I bring guys from Wellsprings to work with. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions, anyone? Thank you for sharing your story. Matthew Markey, and then I have Campbell, Kimball, Skill, and Mannix, and Connolly.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm also a Wellsprings graduate. I grew up in a, in a drug-induced home as a young child, it was almost of the norm. And I spent fifteen years of active addiction, in and out of incarceration for the past ten years, struggling with that, not knowing but wanting the treatment, and not knowing what to do. It wasn't until January ninth of two thousand and fourteen that I got gifted an opportunity to go to a program called Wellsprings that we just heard about. I ended up going through that program because my last use had taken my life, and I woke up in a hospital bed and didn't understand my own name, and that's what, that's what addiction had taken me. And so, I tried something, and I went to the treatment facility that was available to me at that time. Only I can say by the grace of God, because I had tried to go in there before, and it was a long way from this, like we've heard about today. And in doing that, I learned that the problem was me, and that I needed to learn a new way of thinking my way into life, not acting, because the actions that I would take in prior to were wrong and mischievous due to my drug use. I do continue to be an active member of the Bangor Area Recovery Network. I do deal with and work with men at the rehab. I continue to go back because it reminds me of where I was at and where I do not want to be. And it also helps me to remind the people that are there just how lucky they are to be granted a gift, to have a bed in the facility.